Okay. It is time to do some breath work. Oh my gosh. I am excited too. How about you? It's gonna take us a few minutes to kind of start into the session. We first want to make sure that you're really comfy. You can have this on video, or I don't have to see you at all during today's session. It's totally up to you. It would be lovely to see a few faces. If you're brave, but I don't have to see ya. I would love to know if there's any newbies on here, if anyone who hasn't done breath work, or maybe you have, but not, you know, maybe a couple of times or something like that. And we're just, we're gonna, we're gonna start with the breath work in about three to five minutes. So you want to make sure that you have a glass of water, that you're really comfy. For you ladies, you know, undo your bras. You don't need that, you don't need that constriction going on. For today, if you'd like to write in the chat, let me know. Let me know how you're doing, let me know. Just kind of get it out of your body, whatever you'd like to clear during today's session. If there's anything that's really keeping you from peace, or maybe you're just, if you're in a lot of stress, or maybe you're happy and everything's flown pretty, pretty good for you, just whatever it is, if there's anything that's triggering right now or on your mind, please let me know. And I'll do my best to, you know, make sure that we breathe, you know, if you have any symptoms in the body, let me know. Chest pain, shoulder pain, and then throughout the session, we'll just, I'll be able to gently guide you to breathe a little bit deeper into those areas. If you're, if you have any questions, please let me know in the chat. I am, I've been looking forward to this session for a long time, so thank you so, so much for joining me. It's so nice to see you. Hi. There might be a couple of people who can't stay the whole time, and that's fine. You can come and go as you please. There's a lot of miracles, a lot of really, really big breakthroughs that happen at the end of the session. So, sweet baby. Hi, baby. Hi. Nice to see you. So please do your best to stay through the full hour. It does go by really quick, but there's gonna be a moment when you're like, I gotta go, or I have things to do. I mean, you have to go, you have to go. But try to stay for the full session, because the, the best part is when we're all done and people are coming out of the breathing. And then at the end, when people share, it's just, it's so healing, because we're all going through, we're all going through a lot right now. And there might be someone that shares in the end that is going through the same thing that you're going through, and then it just helps the body, it gives the body permission to let it go. So you're gonna feel totally transformed by the end of the session. Just keep doing your best to breathe along with me. My breathing is gonna sound different than yours, because I do breath work all the time, all day long. I'm constantly breathing in this, in this breathing pattern. So, so if you're new today, don't be hard on yourself. I did a session with a lovely woman the other day, and you know, it took about 40 minutes before she could really take a big, deep breath in. And so don't beat yourself up if you can't, if you can't breathe, or take deeper breaths, and you'll know, you'll know what I'm talking about a few minutes in. So just, just try to be really gentle on yourself through this process. By the time we're done, you're gonna feel amazing, but you gotta get through the session with me. Okay, I'm gonna look at, awesome, new to breath work, new Courtney. Awesome, welcome, all the Abraham. I'm so excited for everyone on here. And, okay. Oh, I'm so sorry to hear about the water damage. Yeah. Freshly off medication for anxiety, so this would be a new, okay. Yeah, and if you are, thank you for sharing that, and if you are off meds or anything like that. Let's say if you do struggle with anxiety, you will, you'll start to feel the activation of anxiety kind of coming up in the body. So we're just gonna take it one breath at a time. If you can just sit back and enjoy the ride, and just let your body do whatever it's gonna do. Let it get anxiety, let it feel uncomfortable, and keep following along with my, the breathing. It will pass, but you, you know, there's that moment when we get the panic or get the anxiety, and then it's like, oh no, it's coming, and I gotta do something else, or you know, just, just try to sink into it. And the, and me, me coaching you through, it's gonna really help. So just know that you're totally safe, you are totally protected during this session, and just do your best, if you can, to just sink into it. And I'll be, I'll be supporting you all the way through it, so you'll, you'll be just fine getting through the, the symptoms. Okay. Love you too, beautiful. Okay, there's just a couple of announcements, because there's a lot of new people on here today. If you have any questions or concerns, or if you need to get ahold of me after, you can just reach out to me on my Instagram, Breathe With Kimberly Rose. I'm gonna leave all my links here in the chat box. And then if you signed up for this, you'll get the email, so I'll, I'll send an email in the next few days with my information, if you need to get ahold of me. I'm gonna post that real quick. And we will begin in just a couple of minutes. If anyone needs to use the restroom, now's a good time. You can, you can get one more restroom break-in before we start. If you do have to use the restroom during the session, because we get so much oxygen into the body, it does start to gently detox your body and your organs, so it's totally normal if you have to use the restroom while we're doing this. So don't, don't beat yourself up if, if you get interrupted, or you know, just, just come right back into the breathing and keep, keep the breath flowing. If you, I'm, okay. Thank you, thank you for your message, Laura. Thank you, you're so sweet. Yeah, I just came through like seven months of complete stress, so I feel so much better today. I couldn't have made it through without the breath and all the love and support from everyone. Okay, also, I'm doing a flash breath work sale, so all my downloads after, after today's session, I'm giving a 50% off discount. The, the code is capitalize BREATHE50. I'm gonna post that here in the chat as well. And then I also do one-on-one sessions, which are really, really powerful for people. So, and one more announcement. If you would like, so these sessions do cost money. If you would like to donate, if you can, you're more than welcome to. There's my donation link. It just helps with internet and Zoom fees to do these sessions. So, okay, I think we're ready to go. Does anyone have any question before we begin? So before we do start this, I want to let you know, whatever symptoms that you have on a daily basis, or let's say you were once really sick, and, and you're, you're, you've done a lot of work and you're healed, or you're in the process of healing your body from the symptoms. When we breathe, you might have some residual feelings from that time when you were sick. So it's part of the session, it will clear. So maybe there's just a beautiful message for you that, that maybe you need to see. And then some people who come on here who have Lyme disease, they, they're, it kind of trips them out when, when they start feeling that, that, when they get, when they herx, or whenever they have those symptoms that they have had when they had a flare-up. So if your body gets itchy, or really fatigued, or whatever happens, it's just part of the session, and just keep doing your best to breathe along with me. Okay, I think we're ready to rock and roll. And again, thank you so much for being here with me today. It's really nice seeing your faces. You can do this session sitting up or lying down. Okay, so you're, okay, Michelle, yes, so just, she's, you're herxing right now. Just, just, it's the, this type of breathing, or this type of breath work is really gentle. So I want you to just, everyone just, it does not have to be perfect. There, there should be no pressure. Try to ease off the pressure and just take it one breath at a time. So that's why I love this type of breath work. It is very, very gentle. Okay. Okay, thanks for letting me know that. Okay, everyone, I love you, good luck, have a good time. So everyone, you can, you can lay down, or do this sitting up. I prefer to lay down and put headphones on. You know, you can put something over your eyes if you'd like. You want to be flat, maybe a pillow underneath your neck, a couple pillows underneath your knees. And, you know, for your, for you moms out there, if you're busy with the kids, and you're in the kitchen or whatever, doing dishes, that's okay too. You just keep, keep breathing along with me. And then after 10 minutes or so, maybe when you have a moment, just come lie down and breathe along. But even if you just get 10 minutes in today, you're gonna feel so much better. Okay. We are ready to go. All right, and just know that this is a really safe and protected space for you to just take care of your, yourself right now. And again, it doesn't have to be perfect. A lot of us are going through so much, we've gone through so much in the last year, two years, five years, seven years, maybe even your whole life. And so it's really important that you just do your best to just focus on your breath and your body right now through this session, so you can get a nice reboot. Thank you, Dana. All right, here we go. Okay, whenever you're ready, let's just start by taking a few deep breaths in through the nose or the mouth. And again, one more deeper breath. And whenever you're ready, may close your eyes, relax your jaw, let it float open. And we're gonna inhale through the mouth. Soft exhale. Inhale. Soft exhale. Breathe in. Breathe out. It's just really soft, inhale. And exhale. Beautiful, just like that, breathe in. And let it go. And it takes the body a few minutes to warm up to this. So if you're new, you might be wondering, why are we breathing in through the mouth? So if you need to, you can breathe in through the nose for a few minutes, but the, the most benefits will be if you're just breathing in through the mouth. You can get more oxygen that way. So just do your best to breathe right along with me, and it's okay if you fidget. The first few minutes are kind of activating, and we breathe in. And breathe out. We inhale. And exhale. And now you may start to feel a little dizzy, slowing the breath down. Take a nice, big, deep breath in. And exhale, just let it go, just breathing through the dizziness. It's okay, it's gonna pass. Breathe in. And breathe out. And as you inhale. And exhale. Just letting your thoughts go. They're not gonna be perfect, they're not gonna be positive. You just keep focusing on the breath in. And breath out. This moment, it's, it's never gonna be perfect. There might be things going on right now, or distractions. And that's okay. You just breathe in. And breathe out. And now you can really start to feel your body. You can feel where you have stress. Tightness, you can feel if it's even hard to take a deep breath in. And again, ease off the pressure. Sink into your body and everything that you put your body through. And take three deeper breaths. Try to breathe down through your hips. Beautiful. And you're perfect just as you are. This does not have to be perfect, we are not striving for that. What we're striving for is just being able to breathe through the body. And right now, during this part of the session, it's okay if you can't even do that. You've been through a lot. So what we want to do is, let's just gently send three deeper breaths right into your chest to open up your heart. And if you can, stretch your chest out with the breath in. Beautiful. And one more deeper breath through your chest. Awesome, and just ease off the pressure. And let's see if we can go a little bit deeper. Let's take three loving deep breaths right into your belly. Open up your rib cage, open up your belly if you can. It, it, if it's hard to do this, don't, don't beat yourself up. So let's send a few deeper breaths right into your belly. Beautiful. And the breath should be as gentle as an ocean wave coming into the shore. You know, when an ocean wave comes into like a cave, you can hear all the sounds of the water hitting the, the rocks, so just, letting the exhale go. We breathe in. And breathe out. And again, letting your thoughts, letting your mind go, it's gonna go where it goes. Just let it go, it's okay, it's part of the session. And now you're feeling your body. You're feeling the sensations, and it's part of it. So let's send three deeper breaths, see if you can breathe all the way down into your toes. Just really soft, there's no need for the breath to sound any different than soft. So we breathe in. Soft exhale, letting it go. Breathe in. Soft exhale, letting it go. You're doing great. Yeah. And it's safe to be in your body. It's safe to feel what's going on. You're innocent for taking this time for yourself right now. And whenever you're ready, just breathe right along with me. We're just sending the breath through the tingles, through the vibrations, the sensations. See if you can relax your jaw. Let your jaw relax. As you breathe in and breathe out, see if you can relax the tension in your body, just, okay, okay. It's okay for me to just stop and just breathe, and forget about everything else right now. It's okay for me to just take this time to just settle into my body and reboot. Breathe in. And breathe out. Doing the best I can. I'm doing the best I can with each breath that I take. I'm doing more than enough, I really just need to just pause and breathe. So we breathe in. And breathe out. Yeah. And for some of you who've never done this before, you might be real fidgety. You might be feeling anxiety. So just take it one breath at a time. And if you're here today, just know, you're doing an amazing job. Even just being here right now is helping. It'll help, just being in the vibration of all the love and all the support that is here through every single soul that's here right now. Everyone deserves peace, love, creation, whatever it is that you need to create inside your body. Health, balance. If there's some anger in there, it's okay, let yourself get angry. Let yourself feel however you're feeling right now, it's on its way out. We breathe in. And breathe out. Inhale. Exhale. Beautiful, breathe in. Breathe out. In this part of the session, you may start to feel, if you get a slight headache, you can adjust the breath, so you can breathe in through the nose. Out through the mouth. And breathe in through the nose. And out through the mouth. Yeah, so now we're in the session, you're starting to feel stuff. And let me share with you, it's not easy to lie down or sit up and breathe. It's very hard, but it will get easier. So you know what to do, we're just gonna gently breathe through it. We breathe in. And breathe out. You're doing great. Inhale. And exhale. And if you're feeling triggers and activations in the body, this is where I want you to kind of push through a little bit. So take three deeper breaths, slow the breath down. And really go for it. Even if it's uncomfortable, even if you feel like you can't do it, or you're not doing a good job. Trust me, I'm sure you're doing a great job. Sometimes we're just a little too hard on ourselves. So just blast the body, open up, blow it up like a balloon. How much, how much oxygen can you get into the body? Beautiful. You're doing great. If you need to get a sip of water. Get a sip of water. And as you breathe, really let yourself feel your connection with your body. Our bodies are the temple. We can get a lot of information from our body. You know, it's kind of like when you have that gut feeling, or that knowingness, and then those times when we, we don't listen to the body. So as you breathe, pull yourself back into your body. There's so much going, going on externally, and a lot of times, it's just natural that we're plugged into other people or other things, or what's going on with the world. And I really want you to let yourself just plug into you right now. So with each breath in, pull yourself in, let yourself feel it. Let yourself feel you, your essence, your divinity, your knowing. With each breath that you take, you know exactly what to do. And right now, we don't have to, we don't have to worry about how it's all gonna work out, or what's gonna happen next, or why does this keep happening to me? Right now, we're just focusing on each breath in and breath out. And the breath's gonna show you, once you let go and surrender, and just be right here inside of you, it's gonna show you everything that you need to see, like little whispers from the divine. So, like little God whispers, so we breathe in, just keep that breath going. So here's the breathing pattern, now that we're all ready to go. So you're gonna inhale for about two or three seconds. Soft exhale. Inhale. One, two, three seconds. Soft exhale. And if you hear my breath, on the exhale, just let it fall. Don't push it, don't force it, it'll, it'll create numbness in the body. So we bring inhale, one, two, three seconds. Soft exhale. Yeah, and what's so beautiful about our, the, getting the breath in, is you can help it create more space through the symptoms. So whatever you're feeling right now, send three big Superman, superwoman breaths in through the body. That's it, like really go for it. Kick the symptoms booty, like, so what's so amazing about breath work is, you just send it an even deeper breath in, and it's gonna give your body exactly what it needs to help let that go. You don't have to do affirmations, you don't have to change your diet, you don't have to do anything. Just breathe into you, and the breath will take care of it all. You don't have to figure it out right now. Just sit back and pretend like you're receiving a two-hour massage. Just sit back and pretend like you're receiving a two-hour massage, because that's what it feels like by the time we're done. Now, the session does go by really fast, we're already halfway through. And we breathe in. And breathe out. Breathe in. And breathe out. And for any of you on here who might feel a little worried, you can write in the chat box. Let me know what's going on. I feel like now's a really good time, we're in it. You can really feel what's happening. You might start to flash on some things, past conversations, future conversations. And we breathe in. And breathe out. So we're gonna do a quick little process. So let's take three deeper breaths down through the body. Yeah, no matter what's going on right now, you might feel cold, you might get sweaty, you might have to cough. Whatever's happening, it's all part of the session. You're doing great. Okay, so repeat after me. If the feelings or sensations in my body could speak, what they're really trying to say is... And then, what's the first thing that comes to you? And we get to speak it out of the body. And then when you speak it out, find your breath. Pull it down through the body to give your body the support and energy that it needs to help the body let it go. Or to help the body pull it in. You're doing amazing. If you didn't have an answer, come, that's okay. We're gonna ask the question again. Oh, and, and so keep the breath going. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. And Kara, great, great, someone just commented, "I was feeling anxious because I have read a lot of functional medicine about how mouth breathing, particularly at nighttime, mouth breathing is not good for your body." And thank you for saying that. Yes, for some reason, I don't know why that's coming out. This is, it's, you, listen, here's the thing, you can breathe any way you want to on this session. So if it makes you feel more comfortable breathing through the nose, you can totally do that. But I promise you, I've been doing this for almost 14 years. Mouth breathing, it's like, you know, when you, when you're jogging, when you get in the, in the jogging rhythm, you don't see most joggers breathing in through the nose and out through the nose. They have to go through the mouth to breathe, because they have to get more oxygen to keep it going through the body. So you can breathe however you want to, it's totally your choice. But it is so powerful when we can breathe in and out through the mouth, because it gently dissolves, you can get more oxygen in through this way. But again, it's totally up to you. Breathe however you need to. Okay, so everyone, we breathe in. We breathe out. Okay, so someone writes, "Feel a lot of anxiety and cold." Okay, that's great. I know it doesn't feel good, it's gonna pass. So what you wanna do is you wanna take three deeper breaths and open up the anxiety. It's on its way out. So that's how powerful our breath is, it activates the symptoms in the body. If you feel cold, it's triggering fear, so grab a blanket. And I want you to imagine warming your body up with your breath. So this is where we're gonna have to kind of warrior, warrior through the session. You're gonna have to take a little bit deeper breaths to open up the body and warm it up. So the body's releasing, let it do its thing, you're gonna twitch, you might cry. Smells, tingling, sneezing, pain, open, let go, yeah. Okay, everyone's doing great, so we are definitely in it now, we are in the session. Okay, everyone, take a few deep breaths in, we're gonna ask your body one more question. Okay, and repeat after me. If the feelings or the sensations in my body could speak, what it's really, really trying to say is... And just be as honest as possible. I want you to just speak it out. Okay, and someone wrote, "It's tight, harder to inhale versus normal." So that means that your body is about to gently release. This is where, this is the part of the session where the mind is gonna start messing with you. It's gonna tell you that you shouldn't breathe this way, or you shouldn't do this, or do that, or whatever. It's gonna kind of like psych you out a little because of the symptoms. If you're having sensations or symptoms, the body is clearing. So I want you to just ease off the pressure. Don't, don't judge it, don't have any attachments to. So now, let's say you carry trauma, or emotions, or stress right here in the upper chest. Open the chest up with your breath and exhale. Inhale through the tightness. And exhale. Inhale. And exhale. Now, this isn't forceful, so don't worry. We're not forcing it. You're, you're in the, this is the natural way that we actually should be breathing our whole lives. If you've ever heard a baby breathe, they inhale and exhale, inhale and exhale. It's faster because their lungs are smaller. If you watch an animal breathe, they never hold their breath. So this is the breath that we breathe when we come into existence. Inhale, exhale, inhale, exhale. And then somewhere along our lives, trauma happens. And then we start holding our breath every traumatic experience. So if you're getting dizzy, if you're feeling nervous, it's all part of the session. I'm right here by your side, you are safe and protected. And let yourself sink into it. If you're feeling tingly, repeat after me. Take a big, deep breath in first. And repeat after me. If the tingling in my body could speak. Or if, let's say you have tingling in your hands, if the tingling in my hands could speak. What it's really wanting to say is... And what's the first thing that comes to you? And just get it out of the, out of the body, no matter what's going on, just speak it out. And Katrina, or, or if anyone on here is experiencing tightness in your body, you can say, if the tightness in my body could speak, what it's trying to let go of is, or what it's trying to release is. Beautiful. So someone just wrote me, "If the tingling in my mouth and nose area could speak." It's, or it says speak is what I hear, so this is, this is the part of the session where we're kind of like checking in with the body, we're checking in with the symptoms. As soon as you speak out what's going on, it helps calm the system, it helps release the stored stuff. You're doing great, okay. And everyone, let's get right back into the breathing, you're doing great. So you're doing amazing, so we breathe in. And breathe out. Inhale. And exhale. And I want you to just really go for it, okay? Now, not, not breathe harder. I'm, when I, when I say go for it, I want you to not be scared to breathe through the sensations in the body. All it takes is about 30 seconds, 30 seconds of deeper breathing through the sensations. And it'll give your body that support to just let that stuff go. And it's okay if you get scared. The breath is releasing stored emotions, triggers, worries, fears, doubts. It's part of the session, we're all in this together, so we're all going through the same stuff. Let me breathe in. Yeah, and it's not easy. Lying down for an hour and breathing is very hard, that's why almost 300 people sign up and 40 show up, because it's not easy, so you're totally kicking ass. You're a warrior for just being here. Okay, I'm gonna stop talking, here we go. Yeah, and this is part of the session where you're not gonna wanna breathe. And if you need to breathe through the nose, you breathe however you need to, just like Wim Hof says, just get the oxygen in. He says it doesn't matter if it's nose or mouth, just get the oxygen through the body until you feel all the sensations. And it's passing, let your body pass, let the sensations, let them be what they are, let your life be what it is right now. Let it be what it is and just breathe. Everything that's happening in our lives is exactly what it needs to be and where you need to be, be right now. And we have to learn whatever lessons we have to learn, and we're getting stronger with each breath that we take. It's all unfolding. You're right where you're supposed to be. And as a loving suggestion, the more you can just let yourself go, just keep letting the breath enter your, your body, and just breathe through the body, the more you can let go and trust your breath, and just trust yourself through this process, the more beautiful messages are gonna come through by the time we're done for you. So just trust yourself, trust the breath. Let go, us controlling stuff is not gonna work, the way, you know, us, it's just not gonna work. We have to let ourselves feel what's really going on. Just let yourself feel it, and just deal with it, and keep the breath moving through it. You're safe. With each breath that you take, you are safe. Okay, thank you for letting me know. Someone just wrote me, "There's a deep belly pressure and feels like something is there, almost like a ball of something above her belly button." So just gently send the oxygen into that ball. So maybe that's where you've carried some deep, deep stress from past stuff or recent. We don't have to know. Just keep opening the belly up with your breath. So that's the cool thing, everyone can feel what's going on, okay? Now, use your breath to just gently breathe. And give yourself to strength, the strength to get through that stored stuff. It's on its way out. And then, once that's complete, your sensations will start to move down through the body or up. You'll just be like a ping pong, you know, ping pong, ping pong, whatever it's called, machine. All the, all the stuff going on in the body, it'll just be lighting up everywhere, and that's your body doing its thing. And you keep breathing in. And breathe out. And your body is a machine, and, and you just keep sending the breath to every sensation in the body. Yeah, drink water if you need to, for sure. You're doing great. Look at how amazing you're doing right now. You're doing a great job being here through these times. You're doing an incredible job. And we breathe in. And breathe out. Inhale. And exhale. No matter, you know, so everyone on here is experiencing something different. So some people are feeling complete joy and peace, and some people are feeling rage or sadness, or tingling, you know, whatever you're going through. Just keep the breath moving through it, it's on, I promise you. You are gonna feel amazing, you're gonna feel like yourself again by the time we're done. Yeah, some people are crying, and that's, just let the tears flow. It's beautiful. You are so safe, you are loved, you are supported. It's all gonna be okay with each breath that I take. You're doing amazing. Keep it going. Look how far you've come. You are loved, you are supported. You are perfect just as you are. You are enough just as you are. Yeah, and it's okay if you feel squirmy, fidgety. Just let the fidgets, let the body do its thing. Your, your breathing pattern might, might kick up for those who have anxiety. Let your body get out of control. Maybe that's part of your release. We do ask for as gentle of healing and clearing as possible. We can, we can heal gently, we can let go of stuff gently. It doesn't have to be explosive, it doesn't have to be in pain. If any of you are experiencing pain in the body, repeat after me. If the pain in my body could speak, what it's really wanting to say is... If any of you are experiencing tingling, repeat after me, if the tingling in my body could speak, what it really needs to say is... what it really needs to say is yeah, and, and this definite, we're, we're coming to the end of, um, we're nearing the end of the session, like the last chapter. So this is, this is sometimes the hardest part to get through. So take a sip of water, cough, fidget. Do whatever you gotta do to get through this last part. Speak it out, like right now is a great time. If you need to speak some stuff out, you know, if you're feeling pissed off or annoyed or nothing's working how you want it to, just speak it out of the body. The reason why I feel, okay, here, oh, here's what we're gonna do. Okay, everyone, take a deep breath in. And just letting it go. Okay, and repeat after me. The reason why I'm feeling this way is because okay, and take a few deeper breaths in and just be as real as possible with yourself. Just speak the first thing that comes to you. Big breath in and repeat after me. The real reason I'm feeling this way is because just keep, keep breathing through the body. It's like the body's having contractions. It's like you're going through the birth canal right now. So breathe through all the layers of what's happening within you, within the body. Just keep breathing through it, opening up the body. It's all about opening yourself up with each breath that you take. And exhale, letting it go. The more you can open your body up with your breathing, you are safe, you are protected, nothing bad's gonna happen. The freer you're gonna feel by the time we're done. You're doing great. If there's any tightness through the body, open it up. Open up the tightness and, and be gentle. Sometimes it's not, it's not easy to do that. So if, but if you focus opening up the tightness in your body or any of the sensations going on right now, it's gonna release. But you ha, you have to keep focusing on opening it up. It's safe to let it go. It's safe to let go of the pain. It's safe to let go of whatever is tightening, tightening me up. What is making me lock up? You're doing great. Everyone's doing amazing right now. Okay, so someone writes in, stress keeps showing up for me with nearly every question that I ask. Yes. So just trust that. So just, just breathe through the stress, you know? Breathe through what's stressing you out. Yeah. And I, I can, um, see, uh, for those of you who are on here, see and feel people, you know, um, there's a lot going on in all of our lives. But you're here and you're doing so good. And I promise you, just keep, keep the breath moving through. The reason why I'm asking the questions is because sometimes these sessions get so intense and it's like, oh my gosh, my body has so much going on in there. Um, it just helps to ask the questions, then the emotions and the, the physical, the physical sensations can release. It's just a faster way of letting that stuff go. Okay. You're doing so great. So great. And again, this is, this is, I, I shared in the beginning, if you have to go, you have to go. It's okay. But this is the most important part of the whole session. This is like the big release, the fireworks, the grand finale. So try to stay on if you can. Yeah, if, if you're feeling sensations in the throat, open up the throat with each breath in. Safe to open up my throat. It's safe for me to speak. It's important that I speak my truth right now. If you're feeling heaviness in the chest, in your lungs, you know, just open it up. We carry a lot of sadness in our chest, in the lungs. Open the heart up. It's safe to open my heart. It's safe to open up and let others in. It's safe to receive support. If you're having sensations in the body, in the, in the tummy, open up your belly so you can nourish yourself with each breath. Open it up. You're nourishing yourself. You're digest, you're digesting life. It's gonna be okay. You've got all the tools to get through it. You can, you can make it. You can make it through this. We're all in this together. Once you hear what everyone's going through after the session, you're gonna be so glad that you made it through all the activations in the body. And now we move our way down, breathing down into the hips. Take three deeper breaths right into your genitals, right into your hips. Open that area up, ground, let yourself ground here, let yourself be here. Let yourself not hold, hold you back anymore. You don't, let yourself move forward in your life. You know, sometimes we wait for others to do it for us or waiting for something. But we can never get it outside of ourselves. No person or thing or anything is gonna do it for us. Our hips are here to move us through into then our next chapter, into our growth. So taking a few deeper breaths through the hips, through the sensations. Taking a few deeper breaths through our joints. We wanna send energy through our joints to help carry us through, create more movement through the body, to move us out of stagnation. It's safe to move forward now. And then our feet, seeing if you can feel the breath go all the way down into your toes. For as small as our feet are, they keep us balanced. They move us through. They carry our whole body, our whole being through every experience. So important to give our feet, uh, love and support to carry us. Yeah, and take a sip of water if needed. Wow, did that just get really loud for any of you? That was really, really loud. Like, it felt like chaos. I hope you guys are doing okay. Ladies, gents, I hope you're doing good. We're coming into the final part of the session. Look at how far you've made it. You're doing so good. You deserve all the love and all the goodness. You deserve to feel good. And man, are you gonna feel good once we're done with this last chapter? You just gotta keep powering through. One gentle breath at a time. Beautiful. I love it. For those of you who I can see, I love it. I can see the breath moving through your whole body. Look at how open, open you are and expansive. You're nourishing yourself with each breath. You've come a long way. Look at all the work you've done. You're doing so good. You're like totally rocking it. Why are we ever hard on ourselves? You're doing amazing. And I just wanna invite you, for those of you who have, who have experienced some pretty life-changing symptoms in the body, or maybe your spouse or loved ones have had to change their whole life because of a condition. I want you to just notice your thoughts. And sometimes our mind has been programmed to latch on to things that just don't need to be there. And as soon as we let the mind, let it go, then the body listens to the mind and it lets it go. So what I want you to do as you breathe, I just want you to just focus on all the sensations and the vibrations moving through your body. And I want you to, I want you to use your whole mind and body to attach to you, attach to, attach to all the sensations and the aliveness moving through your body. Cause that is the truth, is your aliveness. And it doesn't matter what symptom you have had in the past. I want you to attach to your cells and the aliveness that is happening right here, right now. It is so easy to like let something go and then attach to an old anxiety belief or attach to you like, you're looking for that past thing, but the past, it's in the past and we're here right now. So I need you to attach to your, to your aliveness right now. We can let the, we can let that trauma go and we can attach right here and just breathe through the sensations in the body and your aliveness right now. The other day I had some, I had suffered with anxiety for the last several months and, um, panic attacks and I've never had it before on that level. And, um, so once everything was complete and, and all the energy cleared and I, I wake up every day and I had it for so many months that I woke up looking for that symptom. And that's how hardcore it was. And then I, I've just been, I've given myself a full month to just let that symptom go. And then now it took a whole month to, uh, now I'm not attached to it anymore, but sometimes it creeps in like, oh, this is where the anxiety kicks in. And then the body listens to the mind. So we are updating our whole body right now with each breath that you take. It's safe to let go. That's how we operated in the past. It's what we did the best we could with what we knew, with what we had in that moment to handle the situation. Now we have the breath. So we breathe in. And breathe out. And if you're not there with everything I just said, that's okay. That's okay too. You, you, you will get there, one breath at a time. So everyone is on their own unique journey. Beautiful. And someone writes, I'm feeling tingly all throughout my body. Yeah. So that's your cells, your, your whole body is open, the blood is flowing through. You have more room in the body. So that's a good thing. Okay. Here we go. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. And during this last part of the session, just do your best to breathe right along with me. Yeah, and as you breathe, your body has gently been detoxing, so it's totally normal to have a stuffy nose. It'll clear in about fifteen minutes or so. You know, your body, you just getting the oxygen in. It just opens up your lymphatic drainage. It just does a million things all at once. So then your body can gently heal itself. You're getting a nice reboot and a very gentle detox while doing this. You're doing so good. And in the last, in these last few minutes, I want you to really slow the breath down. See if you can breathe all the way down into your toes, no matter how tingly it is. Really slow the breath down. And if any of you are feeling numb, like you're feeling numbness through the body, repeat after me. If the numbness in my body could speak. Actually ask your body this, big breath in. And repeat after me, the reason why I'm numb is because. Speak the first thing that comes to you. Okay. One more minute of deeper breathing. And then you can turn on your side. Yeah. I want to heal. Yeah. And take a big, deep breath in and just whatever your needs are right now, just pull it into the body by using your breath. Pull it into your body. You're doing great. And before we complete with the session, I just want to ask your body a couple more questions. Cause this is the part where people, you may be experiencing a lot of sensations. So let's just keep the breath going. And repeat after me. If the energy all over my body could speak. What it wants me to know is and then just speak the first thing that comes to you. And then breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. And breathe out. And everyone, repeat after me. Last question. What I really, really need to let go of is and then speak out the first thing that comes to you. Okay. Now, for many of you on here, the body is still releasing. So just take a few loving, deep breaths down through the body. Move your legs, your hands. Kind of adjust. Stand up if you need to or not. This takes about five minutes to really come out of it. So just turn on your side. And um, just gently breathe along with me if you'd like. I'm gonna let people, I'm gonna let people who want to share, share in just a couple of minutes. But um, I want you to just really, just take the next two minutes and just be, just breathe if you need to. I am absolutely starving right now. I always get really hungry after I breathe. I cannot wait to eat. Yeah. So we just breathe in and breathe out. Just kind of wrap yourself up, just kind of rock yourself like a newborn baby. We'll share in just a moment. I'm gonna use the restroom real quick before we share. Great work, everyone. You did amazing. I'm gonna use the bathroom. I will be right back. And if you feel like you're complete with the session, just take three deep, slow breaths. And before we start with the sharing, I do want to let you know, there's gonna be people who feel so good after this. There's gonna be people who feel nauseous or sick. You'll feel like crap, like that didn't work and your body's still clearing. You'll, you might feel really confused. If that is you, hang on for just about five more minutes if you can. Let it pass before you go start your day or complete, you know, complete your day. So if you do, if you feel like total crap right now, just keep gently breathing. Your body is not done releasing yet. It will release when you start hearing people's stories. And if you have to go, go. Thank you so much for being here. And let me know, reach out to me on Instagram. Thank you so much. This session's always made me feel healing at such a deep level. It's beautiful. It's great. And if this is your first time, sometimes it can take two or three sessions before you're like, wow, you know? So because we have so much stress stored in the body. So just give it another try. Okay. So if anyone, would anyone like to share? My third eye chakra literally vibrated. I love you too, Lisa. Thank you. Thanks Lisa, Lisa. Okay. Yeah. Let me know if anyone would like to share. Let you know, anything that you saw or experienced or let me know how you're doing. Bright eyes. Wonderful session, blissful release of lower back tension, completely cleared, amazing. So awesome. Thank you. Unconditional divine one is homeless. Thank you. Thanks Jimmy. Love you too. Thanks for being here. Enjoy your weekend. First session. Thank you for doing this. Yeah, anytime. I'll, I'd be, I do group sessions once a month. So I do private and then I do groups to make it more affordable for people to hop on. Is there anyone brave enough to share? Probably, probably still, still processing. You can, you can unmute yourself if you'd like to, like to share. I love seeing people's eyes after they breathe, cause um, like all I see is white light coming from their head. It's so awesome. It's so beautiful. First session, thank you. First session for me. Awesome. Thank you so much. Awesome. You're gonna sleep so good tonight. Okay. Hello? Someone unmute themselves? Hello, can, can you hear me? I think, okay, someone unmuted themselves. Would you like to talk? Okay, I'm gonna mute. Okay. It's just, it's really beautiful hearing like what happens for people. And you don't have to share too. So I got this in the comments.
Hey Kimberly, I would like to share.
Hi Carol.
Hi, I think this is either my second or third group with you and I really released a lot of restraint. I, I restrain myself from feeling, I restrain myself from speaking. I just, there's lots of restraint. And that turns into body symptoms. And so um, I released a lot of restraint. I've been having a painful elbow and my painful elbow told me you're, you're holding on, you're hanging on to what you need to say, what you need to feel and let it go. And so um, that was really good. Um, another emotion that I had to let go of was just the approval of man, wanting approval of people and letting that go. So I, I got a lot of good release today. So thank you so much.
Awesome Carol. Thank you. Thanks for sharing. That's, that's incredible. That's, that's beautiful. And from here on out, it won't happen again. You'll like catch yourself if you're ever trying to get someone's approval, you'll be like, oh, I'm, I'm good. I don't need it. That's how powerful that our breath is. Just transform the way we kind of operate. Beautiful. Thank you for sharing. Would anyone else?
I'll share my experience.
Okay. How do you, how do you say your name?
It's Yildiz.
Yildiz. Oh, that's cool.
Um, so this is my first experience with breathwork and I've been intimidated by it. Um, I don't know why. It's probably because I've, I've needed it, like my body knows I need it. Um, but I finally tried it today and oh my God, I almost quit halfway because I was like getting impatient with myself, but my body kind of froze. I was getting really, really hot and sweaty and then I started crying. I don't know why, but I was obviously releasing something. My hands were frozen in a weird uh, position and I couldn't move them. They were like, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Move them and it kind of freaked me out. Um, oh my God, it was just, it was really, really cool. Like I can't believe, I still can't really make up my words right now. It was just really, really like, I released a lot. Um, I've never experienced anything like that. I'm really sweaty and hot right now, but
Yeah.
It was really cool. I didn't really feel anything like come up, but it was very, very physical. Like I, I definitely felt like my legs felt heavy and I was getting hot. I felt a lot in my chest. I felt like there was something there. Um, near my liver, my gallbladder. Um, there was a lot of stuff going on, but yeah, thank you so much. That was really cool. And I'm definitely gonna process it as time goes on throughout the day. But yeah, I just wanted to share that it was very physical. I felt a lot of stuff going on in my body and I'm so grateful for that experience. So thank you.
Great, great job getting through it. It's very hard to get through the first session and that's why it's kind of intimidating. Um, breathwork is at first, because it's like, as soon as you hear breath, it can like trigger everything in the body and you know, what, what's going on in there. So great work. And then so every session's totally different. So chime in again on another group session. And it'll be a totally different experience because you just released all that stress. You've released so much like, and for everyone who's on here over the next few days, you're going to feel so much better. You're gonna be like, whoa, where's all that pain? You know, you'll be, you'll be looking for it because you'll be like, oh my God, it, it released. You know, just 60 minutes of breathing. So great job getting through. I know it's hard. It's like, it's so hard to get through the first session. So great, great job. Would anyone else like to share? So happy. I love all the comments coming in. We'll let a couple, couple more people share and then I'll, you can, I'll let you go for the day. Awesome. I've, I've been struggling with really bad fatigue and actually feel some energy flowing through the session. Incredible. Awesome. That's so great. I'm so glad Nicole. Thank you for sharing. How you doing Yoko? You just, I saw your face and you're, you're, and there's so much light coming from your face.
Thank you.
How was your session?
It was really good and I wanted to, you know, have my video on because I didn't want you to feel alone, you know, showing yourself.
Oh, thanks.
But um, no, I had a lot of tears and I'm actually a therapist. And so my body was saying like, you have too much expectations and you're trying too hard for everybody. Like I had like physical pain and also I just ate before, so that was probably not good. So my body was literally digesting and also experiencing pain because things are too fast. And yeah, like I had a lot of bodily sensations and um, it was really cool to label or name those experiences and ask the body what it wants to say. Um, I think I'm gonna use some of these with my patients.
Yes, please do. Absolutely.
Yeah. And I think I also realized that when I'm talking to people when I'm really listening, like I hold my breath because I'm so like in tune to the other person. And I realize that I also really need to like breathe so that everybody can breathe too, but like I'm holding breath. I'm like listening. I'm like my shoulders are up and tight and tense and I have to manually like bring it down often. So this was really good realization of like, oh gosh, like I'm not breathing. So thank you.
Awesome. Great. Thank you for sharing so much. Thanks for being here.
Kim?
Yeah.
Hi sister. How are you? I'm processing so much. I'm like, I don't even know where to start. I feel like so much happened and came through. I, I, it's like, it was so different from our other session too, which is so incredible. But I mean, I guess I'm still really processing everything, but it's just like this overwhelming deep rooted that feeling or knowing that it's not everything is going to be okay, but everything is okay. And that I am exactly where I need to be, exactly um, in the space, ready to be. I have everything I need to be exactly in every space that I want to be in my life. So, but still processing. I'll share more in the next couple of days, definitely because I feel like I'm like kind of euphoria still and processing, but amazing. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, beautiful, and if you can just, just hang out for a couple more minutes and keep, keep the breath going, because you're still releasing.
Yeah, I am, I can tell.
There are people still releasing on here, so yeah, just, just take as much time as you need, but that's beautiful, thank you, you're so powerful.
Thank you, so grateful, thank you so much.
Thanks for being here.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes.
I might cry. I don't know, I wasn't watching, obviously my eyes were closed, but in the middle of that one, I couldn't stop singing it as well with my soul and it felt like it was for her. So it didn't feel like it was for me, if that makes sense. So whatever's happening for her, I hope you know that it really is well. It's a hymn that always kind of comes up for me when I do breathwork, but it was really bizarre. I, it just didn't feel like for me that time, I don't know. So, it is well, and it doesn't mean that everything's okay or good necessarily, but like you said, you've got everything you need and it is well, so. I hope that blesses you, this session really blessed me too, but I just had to tell you that.
Thank you so much, that's so incredible, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah. Thank you Kimberly.
Yeah, thanks, beautiful. For being here. I, I'll share real quick, I, I live alone and I'm in the country and I, I normally do these sessions just where you see me and I don't see anyone and I I have no real, I, I only have like a handful of people I can connect with, but we all live so far apart, it's really hard to see one another. So this just, it's just nice seeing everyone and feeling everyone who's on here, because I have, I always say I have no friends. So it's just like, it's just nice to, you know, it's, this is connecting, you know, it's the connection, you know? Fortunately, unfortunately, it's through the computer, but you know, it's just, I had to see, and I love hearing people and just what's going on, so thank you for sharing and everyone who's on here, it means it, it fuels me for the next two weeks. So, thank you. I, I just love these sessions so much. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to share, or is anyone, like, how's everyone doing, and then we're gonna, we're gonna close. If, I, I have on my website, breathewithkimberleyrose.com, I have breathing downloads that you can use in your office or with patients, I have like a spa-like breathing sound. I've got five-minute breathers and all my downloads are fifty percent off. And so I'll repost that right now, the code, and then I'll post it on my Instagram as well. And I also do one-on-one sessions. They are, like, if you think that was awesome and amazing, private sessions are really powerful too, because it's just, we just dive right into you. Did someone unmute themselves?
Sorry, I'm Anna, I had to get off the video because I was dealing with some kiddos, but this was my first session and I wasn't exactly sure what to anticipate with the breathwork. There was definitely a lot of different sensations, I was the one that posted that, I kept smelling smells as well that I thought I was smelling for sure around me and it wasn't. I even went to investigate for a little bit. And one of the main things that kind of came up for me was the tingling of the face, the throat, almost the mouth, and that I needed to speak more about what I'm feeling and what I'm seeing and my truth and just standing up for myself. Advocating for my health, advocating for my children's health, you know, like that. And then after that is when I started feeling the, almost like contractions, like the birthing contractions. And so I'm not sure if that's something that's connected with those two sensations or not, but it was just an intense feeling and I almost felt like I had actually physically birthed something in that moment. And I, I don't know what it was necessarily, I don't know how to describe it, but it was intense.
How did you get through that?
So, thank you.
Yeah, it's amazing, I mean, how, how did you get through that, because, and you know what's, you know what's even crazier, I'm sure some of you know, the, the more we're gonna heal in the session, the louder things and distractions, it gets so crazy at home or wherever anyone is. It gets, when you're about to release all that stuff, it's just like being pulled in a million, it gets loud, you know, so
Yeah.
How, how did you, so were you, yeah, you were there?
Yeah, I was, I was there with my kids.
Yeah.
Ignored them.
Yeah, yeah, it's pro, great job getting through that. Yeah, it's, sometimes when doing these breathing sessions, it's almost, it can be unexplainable, like, whoa, where, what is that pain, or where did that come from? I've had, you know, the contractions like you shared. And the, the, the body's just doing its thing, like, we just gotta keep, we just keep getting the, the oxygen in and just keep breathing through it and the body does its own thing, and so that's why it's so great, we don't have to do anything, just breathe. It'll take care of us. So, great job getting through that, that's amazing. And kids love breathwork, by the way. They love when their mommies breathe. I breathe a lot of pregnant women, so thank you for being here. Okay, all right, everyone. Okay, I think we're good, unless one more person wants to share, but everyone did amazing, thank you for trusting me. I'm gonna, you can find me at my, on my Instagram, breathewithkimberleyrose or breathewithkimberleyrose.com, I have tons of free breathwork on my YouTube. There's like ten or eleven free sessions on there, so just have a blast. Whenever you're just feeling stressed, just take a moment to breathe and it'll help you feel so much better, so. Really appreciate all of you, thank you for being here. Have a beautiful weekend, thank you.